We'll go ahead and call this meeting of September 17th, 2018 to order, and ask that you stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Here.
Spohman?
Here.
Ingalls?
Here.
King?
Here.
Mayor Falcone?
Here. And at this time, if we could get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'd move to approve the agenda as presented. Support.
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes, motion carries. Marcus, can you move the thing back so that I could see Sandy? Please, thank you. I keep moving that thing around.
The many-foceted award.
Yeah, you can put it over here if you want.
Maybe at the end of this one.
That's where it was. It was blacked out. Thank you, sorry about that, John.
He's trying to block Mike.
Oh, there's the birthday girl.
There's the birthday girl.
Is that the girl with the birthday?
That's the girl with the birthday.
Okay.
At this time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you come forward with comments that you limit your time to three minutes, as well as state your first name or your full name, and then also write your name and your address for the clerk. It would be very helpful.
Mayor, you may want to note that the public comment for the departments will be later.
Yes, we do have a public hearing tonight for the nondiscrimination ordinance, so I would ask if you would keep those public comments. We can do that during the public comment portion of that hearing, okay?
Your Honor, ladies and gentlemen, the council, as you know, my name is Jason O'More. I am not a resident of the city, but I am the Westford County prosecutor, and I live just outside of city limits, out at 11628 South Lake Mitchell Drive. My reason for talking tonight, to keep it within three minutes, is to talk about the recreational ballot, I'm sorry, the proposal for recreational marijuana. Sorry, I just got off the treadmill, so I dashed over. I want to hit a few points for you and tell you why I'm against this bill. And it's not a bill, and I want to accentuate that, it's a proposal. It's not written by legislators, it's written by people who are lobbyists for organizations who want to make a lot of money. And let me tell you, regardless of what anybody thinks about marijuana itself, I want to talk about why this proposal is bad. And I ask, and I mention because I know there's a lot of information in today's packet for all to consider. Number one reason, the amount of marijuana that's going to be legalized, if this ballot proposal passes as it's written, will far exceed any amount of marijuana allowed in any other state in this country. For instance, Colorado allows one ounce. Our bill says two and a half ounces, but if you keep reading, it's actually 10 ounces of marijuana inside your home. 10 ounces plus 12 plants. 12 plants can produce several hundred ounces over the year if you harvest it well and cultivate it a couple times a year. Now, they tell you that it's not going to result in any black market. That's not true. What we've seen in other states that have allowed it is they've actually seen the black market increase, and a couple reasons why. One of the reasons is when you allow that much to be made, and you allow them to have people to possess that much which they can never use, you result in a black market. The next thing I like to talk about is the actual statistics. When they talk about, often supporters will say, listen, marijuana is not a gateway drug. In Westford County, over the first two years here in my office, we, since I've been in the office, 55% of our cases that involve marijuana also involve methamphetamine or heroin. Next, why is it maybe different than alcohol? Often people will say that alcohol is the bigger gateway drug for young people. That argument doesn't make any sense when intelligent people realize that legal people possess legal alcohol, therefore children are going to have a greater access to it. But when we see medical marijuana, I'm sorry, turn into recreational marijuana, we are going to see young people have a greater access to it, therefore it will become its own gateway drug to other substances. I ask you all to take a good look at this ballot, and regardless of anybody's individual position on marijuana itself, look at this proposal, is it the law that we want as citizens? And I think not. A couple small statistics, and I'm about done. In Oklahoma, or Colorado, for instance, they put out the Rocky Mountain High Intensity Drug Traffic Report, which I think many of you are aware, and the latest updates show they've had over 155% increase in ER visits related to marijuana. They've seen an increase of traffic deaths, auto fatalities, children born in hospitals with THCRD in their system. And the one small statistic I think of you all, or all of us here that are businesspeople, in Colorado, they have more dispensaries than they do Starbucks or McDonald's. I don't know why, but that statistic really jumps out at me. Is that the kind of community that we want to see have? My position here isn't necessarily to talk to people and try to convince them that marijuana is bad. My position here is to entice people to believe that this proposal is bad. It's bad for Westford County, it's bad for Cadillac, it's bad for the state of Michigan. Thank you for your time and attention.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. This evening, we do have the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on September 4th, along with the closed session that was held on September 4th.
Motion to accept the consent agenda. Support.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes, motion carries. So that'll take us to our public hearing that we have this evening to consider the adoption of the nondiscrimination ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. At the City Council's last meeting, the council did determine to set the public hearing for this evening on the topic. Additionally, there was a lot of good conversation about trying to solicit additional information from other municipalities within the state of Michigan that have already adopted such an ordinance. I did move forward and send out Freedom of Information Act requests to all of the communities that were on the list that our city attorney had provided to us initially when we began this dialogue about a month or so ago. And I have received, at least as of last Thursday, approximately a dozen or so responses back. There have been a few more that have trickled in since. But as of, at least as of the results that I had as of Thursday and was able to tabulate them and go through them, most of them indicated that they had not received any complaints, and they didn't have any costs to share. I did also inquire about policies or procedures. Some of them provided copies of their ordinance, or links to their ordinance, or to their Title VI paperwork, all of which we have online in tonight's agenda packet. The packet itself, while we only have a few items on it, was nearly 700 pages, just because of all the backup information that we provided. We did learn that the city of East Lansing, as there for instance, did have a handful of complaints over the last few years. They had four of them. They didn't provide any data regarding to costs, they denied that part. They are one of a couple also that handle the adjudication of the issues that come forward under their code through a special commission. So as you'll see in the chart in your packet, under the procedure column, where it says similar to Cadillac, that's based on the draft ordinance that was a model ordinance from the Department of Civil Rights. A lot of them, most of them, use that same format where a complaint comes in either to the township manager, township supervisor, city manager, city administrator. A couple situations, it goes right to the police department, but in most of the situations that I saw, it looks like it comes to the manager. The manager then delegates it accordingly, whether it's to the city attorney, whether it's to the police department for determination as to whether or not there is something to the merit, to the claim. And then if there is, whether it stays in-house or goes to a state agency or a federal agency for investigation would be determined based upon the nature of what the concern is. The city of Portage also indicated that they had one complaint. They indicated that they thought it may have cost about $500 in approximately eight hours of staff time that it took to investigate. I will certainly continue to provide information once I get a chance to continue to tabulate it. But that's all that I have this evening on the staff report.
All right, at this time, we'll go ahead and open the public comment portion of the public hearing. We do ask that the same three minutes be considered and stayed within, and then also providing your name out loud, and then writing down your name and address. And all of the public comments that we're about to hear have got to relate to this public hearing.
The brave one. Okay, my name's Pat McCurdy. I live at 417 Crestview Place in Cadillac, Michigan, for a short time because I just sold the house. So, I just wanted to follow up on Marcus's survey because when I was here last time, we didn't have any good information, and I was challenged to do my own little survey with our group, our local government group, and we sent out six random letters to city managers in six cities, and we got four back, which is 66%. So I was pretty encouraged. Our three little questions were, who handles the complaints? Were there any unforeseeable circumstances? That was a good word from Mr. King. And were there any positives or any negatives? Well, of course, they all came back, the four, with no negatives. They all came back very positive. They were from Fenton, Lynn Marklin was so, she enjoyed that we had, they had a nondiscrimination-based regulated laws, and that was her positive, you know, that they could cover so many people with the natural origin, sex, marital status, physical, mental abilities, that all these people were handled in this nondiscrimination ordinance. Chelsea John Hanafin, Human Rights Commission had a positive. He said, "A greater sense of a welcoming community" was his positive. Mount Pleasant Nancy Ridley, she said the manager, the city, there was two city managers that handled the problem. We have heard that individuals in our community like having the ordinance because of the positive message and sends, it sends about our community being welcoming and taking equal protection and nondiscrimination seriously. And we also got one from Ann Sullivan from Huntington Woods. She said, "In the four and a half years, there's really been no alleged violation, but it's a positive, it's positive and it representative of the progressive values that our community supports. There are no downsides." So I believe these communities answered, I only had a short time, but we had, they answered promptly, they were very positive. They shared this to us because they really wanted us to have a unanimous vote for this to go through, and that's what I plead for. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Cheryl Mays. I actually am the Director of the Mid-Michigan Library League. I work in the old city hall on the third floor, and I've been here for about three years in Cadillac. And when I first came, I wasn't sure I wanted to stay. If you look at me, you probably don't see things that might be discriminated against, but I am an out lesbian, so that's one thing. I am very left-wing, that's number two. And I like to have my First Amendment rights, and this town was kind of spitting me out when I first got here. But by golly, I'm here, and I'm going to call it my town now. Cadillac is my town now. And I'm becoming more active in the town, and I know people here, and, you know, I've made some community. And I'm, I came from East Lansing, go figure. The last place I was, you know, you talked about they had this local ordinance as well, or, you know. And it was something that made me proud in East Lansing. And actually, I was so excited, this was on your agenda, and that it's, you know, been proposed. So obviously, I'm very strongly in support of you passing this ordinance. And I don't think it's onerous to enforce, and I think it sends an excellent message to anybody that might want to move here and stay here and call it their town. So that's what I have to say. I'll write my name. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Karen Pryor, and reside at 201 East Bremer. And I just want to let you know, I am a sister, I'm a daughter, I'm an aunt, I'm a veteran, college graduate, coworker, volunteer. Been active with advocating and helping with the homeless veterans in the area, advocating for the victims of domestic violence and sexual assault, and also have served on the first board that held the parent board to, the board that allowed, or was behind getting Cadillac Pride here for the first and second year. And actually, want to thank the board for previous measures of the recognition and the proclamation of support after the Orlando shootings massacre happened. I'm not exactly as up to speed as I'd like to be on the ordinance, but preliminarily, I'd like to say that in the exceptions, Section 2, 399-G, it says with respect to gender only. I would like to have the city council consider H, that it will be with respect to sex only. And say, for instance, in our women's shelters. Women and men, that's a gender, that's a social construct, but sex is a biology. So I think that that actually takes away a gray area in the event that if an individual who identifies one way, but still is one sex, they are still held to their biological sex. I think that this would actually, this would be a clarification that reduces any kind of gray area. But I really am very glad myself. I, like Cheryl, when I got here, didn't feel as welcomed as one might, but now I do call Cadillac my city too. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work. Mayor and councilmembers, thank you for taking up this important issue, human rights and fostering a discussion in our community. The human rights ordinance you are considering will help preserve diversity with dignity in our community. Now, I know the word diversity has attracted a negative connotation to it, but let's consider another word, meaning the same thing without the baggage, variety. A much more positive image comes to your mind. Where would we be if Ford still only offered one color on all its cars and trucks? How much less appealing would ice cream be, ice cream cone be, if all we had were vanilla? How much more difficult would it be to wear clothes if all the threads ran in the same direction? The fabric of our nation is knitted together from the variety of the peoples of the world, all with their different traits, customs, quirks, and idiosyncrasies. We have always been stronger because we have been together. But there are forces at work today that would have us separate, ridicule, and marginalize these groups because how they look, speak, dress, act, choose to marry, choose to be them. Thus tearing at the fabric of our community. We must not let this happen. We must step forward, demonstrate leadership, and stop the bullying, hate, and discrimination, the hobgoblins that diminish all of our humanity. I'm not so foolish as to think that our human rights ordinance is a panacea, a cure-all, but if we don't draw a line, we'll never know when we cross it. So I implore you to unanimously approve this human rights ordinance for the sake of these folks, current and past, that have been marginalized. Thank you for your time and your vote.
My name is Joyce Petukovitz, and I live at 150 Arbutus Drive, Cadillac, Michigan. And I'd like to commend the speakers who've gone before me because they said mostly what I feel as well. But I would just like to point out that for every community, we have a responsibility to make laws and ordinances that protect people, just like you would protect them from physical harm, which is a responsibility, so that their civil rights aren't violated. We also have to protect them from the discrimination harm. And discrimination is harmful to anyone for any reason. So I commend the city council for taking up this challenge and to pass this ordinance, and I hope you will pass it. And I think it will say volumes for our community, and will make people know that everyone is welcome here. So, thank you.
Hello, I'm Ruth Ann French. I live at 119 Marble Street here in Cadillac. And I also would like to commend this council and those people who have worked on this effort to bring focus on this very important subject of nondiscrimination to our community. The 15 areas that are covered in the ordinance of, from age to weight, I was impressed by the inclusivity of it and the language of it. I personally only represent about three of them, you know, and I'm getting older. So because of that, I volunteer, you know, to help make sure that our seniors at the Senior Center and at the Council on Aging are taken care of within our community and that those millage dollars are spent wisely. And also, you know, I'm a woman, and of course, it used to be an issue. Nowadays, people kind of take for granted that we all have equal rights. But if you'll bear with me, I have a very short story that goes back to about 1976, when I found my passion to be able to work outdoors and did the, jumped the hoops of getting an education and a degree, and taking a civil service test, and then went to the DNR to knock on their door and get a job as a technician, a field worker, and I was told right to my face, "We don't hire women technicians." And that was the case for about three years, until 1979, when the federal government told the state of Michigan, "You will start hiring women in these jobs." Because it's, you know, it took that frame of reference, it took that change for things to change within our culture. And so that happened in my lifetime. And so it's important to me to be, to be an example, but to be kind of a bit of a trailblazer in the kinds of rights and things that people need to have in our communities. And so I'm really grateful. Also, I have, many of you know, I do have a visual impairment. I have a disability that way. So that's another big category that spoke to me as part of this ordinance that, and you all just came from a dedication in our community to allow people with mobility issues to be able to enjoy and recreate, along with kids and others that can swing in a regular, old-fashioned way. So I'm so excited that our community is looking at these issues. And obviously, I'm in support of it, and in support of all of your efforts who are working on a chance to make our community more inviting, more inclusive, more diverse. And I'm grateful for the chance to be able to speak. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Katie Maynard, and I live here in Cadillac. And up until about four years ago, I was a mental health therapist in Cadillac and Point South, down about as far as Baldwin, and then here at Community Mental Health and Great Lakes Family Care. So the interesting thing about being a mental health therapist is people tell you things behind the doors that they might not tell you out in public if you didn't know them. Something very consistently I saw, or I heard about our town, was from African-American patients, or their spouses, or parents. And what we were known as, is a racist community. This wasn't a safe, it wasn't a safe place for teenagers from Baldwin to come up here. That's what we were known for. Broke my heart, breaks my heart that Cheryl came here three years ago and didn't feel welcome. And I would say we are a welcoming town, and I think everyone on the council would agree, that we want to be known as a welcoming town. And so I stand here in support, with many other people, to say that this is not something that's going to eradicate that sense of racism in our town, but it's something that very publicly states who we are and that we are welcoming, and that we are open our doors just a little bit more. And I want you, and you, and everybody else, to feel welcome here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close the public. I see someone else.
Madam Mayor, councilpeople, great to be here. Phil Potvin, 129 Petrie Road, Cadillac, Michigan. You know, God created men and women. You know, God created men and women. We are each responsible for ourselves. And if one makes a personal choice to change their gender, that person is still responsible for themselves. We are blessed to live in America. We have laws that offer protection, and officers whom are well-paid but who do a great job of protecting us, each and every one of us. And these laws apply to all, not just one group, but to everyone. And for a very small group to ask for special additional ordinances, I don't feel as necessary, since there are both state and federal laws in place for anti-discrimination. Therefore, the City of Cadillac's anti-discrimination ordinance is not necessary. And I ask each one of you to please vote no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Gerald Olson. I live here in Cadillac. And I, as like Mr. Potvin says, I don't think we need this ordinance. And if you do think we do, pull it to the vote of the citizens of Cadillac, not you guys. Let them decide we need it. If you would, please. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing and move to discussion of the council.
Mayor and members of the council, as you begin your discussion, I just wanted to draw your attention to the copy of the draft ordinance that was left at your seats this evening. There is a slight change to it, and that is under section 2-398. It states, there's a letter G. I'm sorry? Nine?
Two, three, nine.
Oh, okay. Two dash three nine nine, I'm sorry. It states, letter G, "With respect to gender only, a group homeless shelter that shelters only persons of one gender." That's the only difference between the version you last saw and the one that's in front of you this evening.
Okay, who would like to start the discussion?
I, I appreciate everyone's comments. I've heard from other people prior to this meeting as well about this, about this ordinance. In, in, in terms of that it should go to a vote, that's not how government works. That's not how city government works. Ordinances are put forth and passed by this body. So that's the, that, that's how this, that's how this gets done. Otherwise, it would be like direct, what is it, direct democracy? And, and everybody would be, this is how, this is the system that we have in our country, and this is the system we have in our state and in the city. So, excuse me. Ouch. I'd also like to say that the overwhelming message that I've heard from people who've contacted me prior to this meeting and from the people at this meeting is that the face we put forward, the statements that we make as a community are how the community views us. I remember trying to get a group, a choir group up here to play for a, for a mini festival we were doing a number of years ago. And they said, "Where is that Cadillac?" And it was a black gospel choir. And they said, "No, we really don't want to come there." So, and that, that really, even though we think that's changed, was it the day that the bathrooms opened that a swastika was painted on the door? So it isn't like we don't have these issues here. This is also not, not making illegal your speech. You could say as many hateful or opinionated things that you choose. It's when you physically discriminate, when you have a service or housing, or offer a job and say, "You can get it, but you can't, and you can't, and you can't for these reasons." That's what we're talking about. We're talking about making a statement of who we want to be as a community. Maybe it's not who we exactly are yet. I believe we're becoming that. I believe we're getting closer to that, as I'm seeing tonight and in all the people who've contacted me prior to this meeting. So I just, it's time. The time is now, the time is right. You know, like the old gospel hymn goes, "Now is the needing time."
Well, I'd just like to reiterate what I said in the prior meetings, that, you know, this, just to clarify, this protects people from discrimination when they're seeking employment, housing, or public accommodations and services. And that there's a section in the ordinance that said, you know, we won't, we will undertake an investigation on any complaint that's not covered by Michigan or federal anti-discrimination statutes. So I think, I don't think this will create an undue burden on city resources. I think that if we experience any complaints and, that we, they would be referred. It is my hope that that's what would happen. I think as we were looking for stories of issues or anecdotal evidence on, on why not to do this and what could go wrong, they weren't, they weren't there. I don't think there was anything that I found that scared, scared me away from this. And I think it's good government service when people know that they can call the city and that the city can connect them with their proper, with the proper service. And that's, and this, that's what we're doing here, you know, facilitating the needs of the citizens of Cadillac. And I, you know, I, I support that, so.
I think one of the things that's most important, and I, and I want to commend everybody that in the public that's worked on this, is that change comes through discussion. And one of the biggest problems we have today in society is people are afraid to have really tough discussions. It's either you're for me or against me, rather than let's talk about ideas and work through things. So I think the fact that we're having these discussions is excellent, and I support that. And the group that came up with the, the ordinance, I met with, we had lunch and, and talked about different issues and how important it is to make Cadillac a welcoming community. Because I believe we want to be a welcoming community, not only for our public, but for the businesses that are here, to be able to bring in employees, et cetera. However, I'm cautious, and I look at it differently. Obviously, a lot of people know here that I'm an attorney, and I don't believe we should put laws in place just to feel good. When we have laws available to have avenues of recourse for people, then I think we use those laws. We don't come up with new laws to do something that's already there. And I think the paper did a very nice job today in talking about how the schools have put a bullying process in place that includes discrimination against students, the processes to be followed. And then if, if certain actions happen which go over what's even in the school policy, then it's referred to people like Mr. Elmore, who are county prosecutor and elected officials, to then use, whether it's stalking statutes, electronic communication device statutes, all these things that are in place that we have now. So I want, and I am in favor of Cadillac being a welcoming community. I am in favor of continuing all discussions, because this ordinance isn't going to change anything. It's going to be people like you with people like me who are willing to discuss these issues that are going to cause the Oprah environment to do it. I have concerns still about when we have laws and ordinances in place that aren't being utilized. What training is going to be in place for the person in the city, whether it's Marcus, whether it's Adam, our public safety director, whether it's Eric Geller, our police captain? What training are they going to get? What resources do we need to do? How, do we just take something and throw it in a lapse of people who haven't dealt with this in the past and don't have procedures in place? And are we exposing ourselves to problems that way? When I looked at all the surveys, and I want to thank Marcus for getting more information, the fact that every community that had this, that we were able to get information from, indicated that there weren't complaints, that made me happy, in the sense that with all the challenges we have, other avenues are probably being fouled, because we all know that discrimination occurs and there are problems. The part that bothered me in the information that we got, and I think Marcus probably said, is most of them said, "We don't really have any procedures in place. We've had nothing, we didn't, we haven't had any complaints, so we don't have procedures." And as an attorney, that scares me. Because if you don't have procedures in place prior to putting something like this into effect, then you're going to get the Gordian knot of problems when you do have issues and you don't have procedures and you don't have training. So I'm very much in favor of Cadillac being an inclusive community. I'm very much in favor of continuing the discussions and making sure these issues are out in the open so that people do feel welcome. I'm not in favor of putting an ordinance in place to try to make something, make us feel good. We don't do that with laws. We do that through our actions and through conversation.
I appreciate everybody's comments tonight, and I know, or this afternoon, tonight, there's a lot of people that didn't speak who may have wanted to but didn't feel comfortable speaking. I understand this is personal for a lot of people, and you've given it a lot of thought. I, like Councilmember King, believe that as a community, we want to be inclusive. I usually look at the goodness in people. Sometimes I might be a little naive with that, but I like to think that most people don't consider themselves to be prejudiced. You know, unless they really examine themselves and they start to realize that maybe they are just a little bit here or a little bit there. But, you know, we're, we all reflect what we know and how we've grown up, and who our parents are, and who our family is, and the community in which we live. And so I do think it's a community conversation. And, you know, sometimes we're faced with fears, and the fear is fear of the unknown. Because, you know, we don't know what it's like to, I don't know, have someone in the family who is African-American, or another nationality that's different than what we are, or to have our son and, or daughter be lesbian or gay. Or, there's a number of different situations that we might not be familiar with, so we're a little bit afraid of it. And, you know, and it's a really good question, does it, is it something that should become law or an ordinance? And I take a look at what the federal government has done, and I take a look at what the state government has done. And the state seems to be lacking or lagging behind the federal government in regards to protecting certain classes. And I'm a strong believer that all these classes need to be protected. And I would like to make sure that nobody is discriminated against in the City of Cadillac for housing or for employment, for new job opportunities, et cetera. And, you know, we've kind of done due diligence on this. And it is fairly new, but we know that there's a lot of communities in the state of Michigan that have an ordinance protecting our basic human rights. And, you know, so it's not really that risky, but if, if you feel like it's a risk, for me, it's certainly a worthwhile risk to take. And so I want to support this ordinance.
Again, I would reiterate a lot of the things that were said in the room this evening. You know, and I appreciate the thought on training of staff. You know, if this is, if this is something that the council feels is important enough for our community, then if, if it's important enough for our community, then we need to seek the correct training for our staff, to make sure that they're prepared if something does come forward, that it's not, you know, a fire drill as soon as it hits, but that they're comfortable knowing what resources they have available to them and how do we facilitate the process. You know, I, I, it's not unlike what Robert said last, or two weeks ago at our meeting, you know, our job here is to facilitate this process. It's to take it to the next level. It's not that we're going to have to necessarily bear the expense of anything that, should it happen, but we have resources available to us and we can guide people through those discussions to some extent. I so appreciate those of you who stood up tonight and told your story about coming to our community. And I so appreciate the fact that you chose to stay. That tells me a lot about Cadillac and the people that you have connected with in Cadillac. You know, a discriminate, a discrimination ordinance doesn't have to be in any one area, the lifestyle you've chosen, or the color of your skin. There's 15 areas that it protects people from, if you will, as far as discrimination. And I know when people hear discrimination ordinances, for them personally, it may only involve one of those categories. But it's much more than just one category. It's 15 areas. And to your point, Ruth Ann, talking about the senior citizens in our community, making sure that the dollars that are available to the senior citizens, all the senior citizens in our community, that they're used wisely and we're best stewards of our resources, and nobody, for whatever reason, is going to be left away from those services. So I listened very carefully tonight, and I've had a lot of conversations over the last couple of, of weeks with people in the community. And I, I have to say, that discussion has been really, really good. You know, even if it's not what I want to hear, I heard what other people had to say, and I appreciated that honesty.
I have one more thing to say, because I have, I need to acknowledge, you know, the concerns that I have been hearing. They were usually very, they were always very practical, let me just say that. I haven't heard any hateful critiques of this. I haven't heard any people who don't like this because they want to discriminate and don't like other people. I think a very important part of, of the ordinance here is the, is the last section 2-403. This nondiscrimination ordinance shall not be read to prohibit or interfere with a person's or religious institution's free exercise of religion, as protected by the First Amendment to the United States Constitution and Article 1, Section 4 of the Michigan Constitution. And I think that, that was just as important as the rest of the ordinance, and that is in there as well.
Okay. I entertain a motion if anyone would like to make it.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt nondiscrimination ordinance. Support.
Councilmember King?
No.
Chipper?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Fulkens?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, with that, it takes us to a really important community spotlight tonight.
Okay, with that, it takes us to a really important community spotlight tonight.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. This evening, I'm very honored to advise publicly that the City of Cadillac has won the Best Tasting Water in Michigan 2018 Award from the American Water Works Association. And without hearing any more, without hearing me ramble on about it, I am going to introduce Jeff Deelen, our Utilities Director, who will then introduce a special guest that we have here this evening about this award. Jeff? It's the Stanley Cup of water travels.
Stanley Cup of water.
It is, it's on tour.
There you go, you can put it right up here, Seth.
A many-faceted award.
A many-faceted award, a good one.
Be sure to tell about the journey this spring, where it started.
Is it delicious? Jeff, mention the water.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'll mention it. I'll mention everything. Hello, council members, the council mayor. My name again, Jeff Deelen, I'm the Utilities Director, and as Marcus indicated, we did win the coveted Best Water Tasting, or Best Tasting Water in the State of Michigan 2018. We defeated a two-time champion, somebody that's really good at making water, Ann Arbor. So we took that away from them, maybe only a year, but hey, this year, our water's the best. In front of each of you, we have a glass bottle that we're going to refill every council meeting and bring our award-winning water to you directly, so we don't have to have any plastic bottles anymore.
Yay!
Thank you. Tonight, I have the honor of introducing Aaron Davenport. He is from the Michigan AWWA, and he's also works at Henry and Jones, Jones and Henry. So, I'm a little dyslexic, and he's going to talk more about our award.
Thanks, Jeff.
Welcome.
Thanks. I'm Aaron Davenport with Jones and Henry. I'm an engineer, but I volunteer for the Conference and Recognition Council for the AWWA, and I preside over that competition, both at the regional and state level. You have fantastic water, and I'm glad you're going glass and tap. You hold one of those up, you could fill that up about 100 times at your current rate for a penny. Forget that dollar and a half bottled stuff, you got gold right there. So if you have any questions about the competition, I'd be happy to answer them. Your water will be going on to represent Michigan at the national competition in June in Denver.
That's awesome. We did have a question.
Absolutely.
Do you want to ask it? See how you cleanse your palate?
Oh, yeah, how do you cleanse your palate between tastings?
The tastings during the competition.
Yeah.
During the competition.
Oddly enough, there is a science to that, and I'm a super water nerd, so I can tell you all about it, but, you know, it's not like coffee or beer or wine tastings. Those, you actually need to neutralize a chemical. In this case, your best bet is actually two big gulps of air. It's a great oxidant, cleanses your palate for a water tasting.
We were betting on water pressed.
That would be very fitting, but...
You knew there had to be something.
Yeah, oh, yeah. No, we looked, we looked deep into this, and this competition was presided over by a great panel. Jim Williams, who's the president-elect of the AWWA at the national level, Amy LaChance, who runs the community water supply for the MDEQ, and a consumer, Jenna Wolfram. She's the conference director for the hotel where the conference was at. So to her, it matters. You know, it's business. Water goes bad, her business goes bad. So she, to me, was the most important judge, and this guy's water right here was, it wasn't even close. That's a lie, it was pretty close.
But it won.
Well, you have to remember. City of Cadillac was competing against four other water systems. Every one of them had won their regional back in the spring. So at this point, the state level, you're splitting hairs. It's best of the best time, so you should be really proud of your supply.
Yeah, thank you.
I also did hear somebody ask, "What happens if we don't win next year? Does our water get worse?" Did I hear that?
To the extent we knocked off the two-time champion, did their water get worse?
No.
Or our water get better?
No, and that's, that's one of the things that I'm, as an engineer, I'm not, I'm not trying to sell you a thing, but I can tell you that your water system, you know, the news isn't great all the time about water, and that's...
Chris, plug your ears.
Well, don't plug your ears. It's important to pay attention to what's happening, but, you know, people will take it for granted that for almost 100 years, you've had just perfect water, right? And testing has gotten so good, now we're actually going looking for things that we have never even cared about being there. So, no, your system didn't get wor, Ann Arbor didn't get worse. It's just sometimes you maybe changed treatment trains or drilled a new well, and, you know, that's why it ebbs and flows. Ann Arbor's actually won three times, two, last two in a row, and then not since the mid-'90s before that.
Thank you.
Absolutely, happy to do it.
Thank you so much.
No problem, be very, very proud of your system.
Absolutely.
And keep it up, I want to see you win twice in a row. I'd love to come back next year.
That's a goal.
We have competition.
We do. Having good waters.
Well, of course, I'm writing the article that goes in Water Works News, and of course, I had to call it "The Cadillac of Drinking Water." Feel free, I'll let you, file the patents, I'll let you guys have that one, trademark it up. That's my gift to you. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job, Jeff.
Jeff, can you grab the...
Oh, that should just stay there.
Any other questions, or...
Right here.
No, I love the wine glass that they chose to use, though, it's nice.
Yeah, I know.
It really is nice.
I'll just put that down in front of you.
All right, wonderful, thank you.
We don't block, block the road.
Okay.
Good job, Jeff.
It's a nice order.
Congratulations, Jeff. Okay, that takes us to communications for this evening.
As we request to approve the placement of one sign at the three locations listed from October 17th through October 20th for the Zion Lutheran Church Craft Show.
Make a motion to approve the request from Zion Lutheran Church to place one sign at the three locations listed in the packet from October 17th through October 20th for their craft show.
Support. Councilmember Sheppers?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. We're now at the City Managers' Report. There are two items this evening. The first one is an update on medical marijuana. Earlier this summer, the city put together a public forum. The forum was actually facilitated by the Michigan Municipal League. The panel included our county prosecutor. It also included a policy advisor from the policy group that's part of Weed Maps, and it included one of the senior legislative analysts with the Michigan Municipal League. I believe there's also a state police officer that our prosecutor brought along with. The forum was not very widely attended. There were approximately 20 to 25 people that attended, most of which were not from the city, as we could tell. There were a number of questions that were asked. The public packet this evening does include a transcript of those questions, along with the answers that our prosecutor provided, as well as the municipal league. We did not get any responses back from the policy group at Weed Maps, and I will, I will note that that's because a lot of the questions really were not something that would have been appropriate for Weed Maps to comment on. They were questions about certain personalities and people that were in the room, and you can see the questions for yourself online or in, or in the packet. At the time, we had discussed that there was going to be a survey that was done. The survey was going to be one directed at those folks that live in the city and own property in the city. And then we had talked about the likelihood of putting together then a second forum if we think it's necessary to then continue to talk before bringing it back to the City Council. Where we are, where we are at right now is we have the results back from the survey, so we send out approximately 4,000 utility bills. The survey was online. In one of the bills, we sent a letter as a separate attachment that included information about the survey and, and a link as to how people can take the survey. We only received 294 responses. So just before we go into any of the data that I'm going to share, understand that it's not a statistically significant or valid survey response, but it still is 294 responses that we did receive. Also important to understand, too, that don't, don't equate the number 4,000 with, with 4,000 people. So, you know, there's 10 and a half thousand residents that live in our community, plus there's all the industry, both, you know, commercial, industrial, and the like. Though, that equals approximately 4,000 accounts. So just understand that it's not a one-for-one trade-off, okay? So in the communication that I put in the public packet, which again, it's available online as well for anybody to see, I bulleted what I thought were some of the more salient points of the survey results. So of the responses that we received, about 86% of those that filled it out said that they lived in the city. About 45%, almost 46%, did respond that they would not be worried if the city were to allow growing, testing, processing, or the selling of medical marijuana within the city limits. At the same time, we had about 28% say that they would be extremely worried if the city were to allow growing, testing, processing, or the selling of medical marijuana within the city. Approximately 50 to 60% of respondents are in favor of allowing growing, testing, processing, or selling medical marijuana facilities in the City of Cadillac, and nearly 60% believe that there should be a 1,000-foot zone between the facilities and schools, churches, daycares, and residential areas, with nearly 70% wanting a limitation of the number of permits and licenses issued. Merely coincidence with regard to timing, last week, as I was putting together the packet for tonight's meeting, I happened to get an email from the University of Michigan that had the results from an analysis that they had recently finished, and so I took their survey summary and also included it within the packet. And so this is summary data from the University of Michigan Center for Local, State, and Urban Policy. Close Up is the acronym that they use. They surveyed Michigan local governmental leaders across the state. I bulleted, again, a few of their information. Their data states that 8% of cities, villages, and townships statewide report opting in to allow medical marijuana facilities in their jurisdictions, while 75% report that they have chosen to prohibit medical marijuana facilities, which is simply done by not taking any action. When it comes to medical marijuana, the default position is you're already opted out. You need to take a position of opting in in order to get involved with it. Other key findings, as they describe, are the following. 17% of jurisdictions report experience with medical marijuana facilities in their dirt, in their jurisdiction, either currently 10% or in the past, 7%. And by contrast, 69% say there have never been such facilities in their jurisdiction and none have been proposed or planned for the future, while another 5% of jurisdictions have never had facilities in the past, but report that some new facilities are being proposed. It goes on to talk about some additional stats about those that have opted in versus those that have, that have opted out, and also comments just a little bit about local officials' support regarding the legalization of recreational marijuana at 21%, at least based upon the, the survey data. I included the entire survey report itself within the packet. Again, all this information's available online for anybody to see it. You'd find it under our agendas and packets section of our website, and just simply click on the PDF that's got today's date, September 17th, 2018, and you'll find all of this information there. I don't need to miss...
The 500 pages?
What's that?
In, in the middle of the 500 pages?
Yes, yes. No, it's part, it's part of the 500 pages.
And that's, did you say the Agenda Center site, though, too? Because that does make it so much easier to get to it.
Yeah, it's there as well.
Because you can click what you want.
So if the public understands that not only is there the city site, it's the city email, or web address slash, forward slash Agenda Center?
Right.
And when you go to that, you see the actual agenda for tonight, and then there are highlighted blue sections with all the supporting documents. You can jump, rather than go through our 700 pages, you can jump immediately to that supporting document.
As long as you click on the HTML.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
The packet also includes the consolidation of data of the responses from the survey itself. So it includes the listing of the 10 questions, along with how they were responded to, and it also then provides, there were, I think, two or three questions where you could write a response in, so anybody that wrote anything in, we also printed that out. It doesn't provide names as to who took the survey or who wrote what, it just provides just the raw, just the raw data. So for anybody that would like to dig into this a little bit deeper, certainly, we're not in any big rush, you know, feel free to, feel free to do that. And that kind of brings me to the next point about the timing of all of this. We had originally considered or contemplated having another public forum to talk about the results of this information, to see if there was any more feedback, and then we would bring it back here for conversation. I'm not certain if we need another public forum, given all of the outreach that we've done thus far, when I'm, in light of what I'm about to suggest. Given that we are at the end of September, we know that there is going to be a statewide ballot initiative or referendum vote in November, in the beginning of that month, on the recreational side, and given that information that's been conveyed at various professional workshops that we've attended, we know that there's going to be, if it's approved, essentially an upending of the medical marijuana legislation that's already in the books. My suggestion, and certainly I'm up to do whatever the council would like to do, might be to wait to see how this vote goes in November before we take action, if the plan is to take action on any implementation of the medical marijuana, to take action on the medical marijuana and potentially the recreational marijuana at the same time. My only concern is that I feel like we might put a lot of energy and effort into putting something in place, if, again, it's the will of the council to do so, on the medical side, only to find that what we're being put, what we're putting in place may be upended by the vote, the statewide vote, in 45 days. So I don't know, Mike, can you try to clarify a little bit on that?
Well, you may have to go back, I mean, anything that you do now on the medical side, you may have to go back anyways and adjust for the recreational side, depending on what happens with the ballot proposal, so, but, you know, I think it's prudent probably just to wait and see how the vote comes out and decide how the city wants to address it from there. I mean, you could always opt in now, certainly, on the, on the medical marijuana side. That still leaves some issues, like how you're going to regulate it and what you're going to do with just the medical side. But on the recreational side, there may be some issues with, that emerge out of that as well, like, that aren't addressed on the medical marijuana side. How are you going to regulate that business use then, and where can it be located? Does it go in your commercial areas or your business districts? All of those questions that come up.
Don't you think it's going to take a long time for us as a state to figure all of that out? So this could just drag on forever.
Well, like on the, on the medical marijuana side, it didn't take long for the law to take effect, but it took a long time for the courts to figure out what... take effect, but it took a long time for the courts to figure out what it meant. Now, they've done that mostly on the medical marijuana side.
And, you know, the other question I have, and maybe you address this, but if the recreational passes, that doesn't undo what's already happened with the medical?
No, that's right. But you may want to regulate, regulate those uses in a similar fashion, right? So, that you may have to go back and add those particular uses, just from a zoning and land use perspective about where they're going to be, how many are going to be allowed.
Yeah, I get that, yeah.
On the, even on the medical side, you know, we went through a period, shoot, I advised, I think, all of my municipal clients to wait and don't do anything, and that's because there were municipalities that, in my opinion, jumped the gun and reached conclusions under the early law that were not supported by the law. Take, for instance, on dispensaries. There was nothing in the law that authorized dispensaries, and it took a few years then for the court to reach the same conclusion. And so, there were municipalities, like Lansing for one of them, that had said, oh, here, you go ahead and open up all these dispensaries. And then, they kind of got into an issue about how they were going to deal with them when the courts ruled that, no, they were unlawful. Now, they've sort of worked that out with this opt-in and all of that, which is kind of rectifying those problems. But, you know, I think it's probably, at least on the recreation side, to wait and see how the ballot proposal is going to turn out.
I might be, I might be mistaken, Mike, but I thought I saw somewhere where it said, if you have medical marijuana facilities, should the recreational marijuana legislation pass, then recreational marijuana could also then use those same facilities, that they're not sep, they don't need to be separate and distinct from the medical marijuana classification. And in my mind, that causes a little bit of conflict, because should the city of Cadillac embrace the medical marijuana legislation and want to be a part of that, but should not embrace the recreational piece, you, we now have this, this conflict, because under the referendum that's coming up in November, it's an automatic opt-in. So, you're already, you know, so if you've already allowed some of it, now it's, there's already a place to go. This is a big conversation, obviously, a big discussion, one that we're certainly not going to resolve this evening. I really wanted to just bring it back up to the city council and to the public, to let everybody know that, you know, we have our survey that came in. I'm not trying at all to discount the results of the survey. I think it's important for us to acknowledge that there are, you know, 300 accounts, if you will, nearly, that took the time to, you know, to address it. I think that, you know, we have some options in front of us as to how we want to proceed. Should the city council want to move this forward and have us do another public forum of sorts, I'm happy to do that. If we want to wait and see what happens with the November ballot, I'm happy to do that. If we want to start having conversations, conversations just at this level, to actually get into the nitty-gritty about the five different licensing categories, and, you know, providing some feedback regarding how many we potentially should allow, and should we create the distance barriers between them, then that would be good information for us to relay to our planning commission, because ultimately, that's where the next step of this would be. I'm making an assumption, of course, as I say all of this, that the city council is looking at moving this forward. If the city council isn't looking at moving this forward, then, then obviously, what I just said is moot. But if, if we are, then it would be good for us to provide, I think, some framework so that our planning commission has a good idea as to what their objective should be when looking at identifying locations within the community in which these, these uses, these special uses would be allowed. So-
I think that, that when we talked about this earlier, you know, our, I think that we wanted to get a feel for where the community was. We knew the vote was going to be happening in November, and we wanted to get a feel for, you know, how the community was feeling about this topic in general. And so, at that time, we decided to go ahead and hold the public, or the public meeting, and we brought in the resources to help educate people. And I went to that meeting, and as you, who else went to the meeting? You were there, I knew somebody else was there. But there, there really weren't a lot of people from the community there, and, and so I don't think we really found out anything from that public meeting that we thought, that we had hoped to. And even in the survey that we did, as you say, we can't discount those, those responses we got, because they're very important, but there's a lot more people out in the community that we need to hear from. You know, is having another public meeting, is it going to be productive? I don't think so, but I'm not, you know? Maybe it would be, now that we're getting closer to November, maybe people will want to, you know, take time out to really understand what's going on. So, maybe it is worth another try.
I would agree that we hold off until the vote in November.
Okay.
Just-
We're going to be spinning our wheels, otherwise.
Yeah, we need, and then we'll have all the information we need.
And we don't, we don't need to-
Right. At the second, at the second meeting in November-
As soon as I said that, I was like, what?
Yeah, I just don't feel like we should, we should have a sense of urgency to have another survey or another public meeting before that vote, because I think that we'll have a better understanding of the direction we may need to go after the election.
I think that's, that's great feedback. I think as we're all planning to attend the convention later this week that the league is, is putting on, there will likely be some good updates on this topic as a part of legislative update. It certainly does make sense to pause to see what the state vote comes in at, and, you know, at that point, I think we regroup. We can certainly do another public forum. In fact, as we do it, we may even choose to do it as an actual meeting of the city council. We can meet, this body can meet at the high school or at another much larger venue to accommodate a crowd if we think that we'll have one on this topic as we look forward.
And you said we had, what, 400 people respond to our survey?
No, we had, we had 4,000 surveys that went out, because there was 4,000 accounts. We received between 287, I think, and 294 responses. But understand that, you know, one of those could have been reflective of some major corporation in, you know, in the city, or it could have been a single, you know, a single person living in an apartment. I, we don't know who responded to it.
And we'll get to see vote totals for our city with November, which would probably be a better-
Gauge.
Gauge of, of anything that we can send out, so.
Sure.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
The last item under the city manager's report is in regards to fluoride discussion. At the city's last council meeting, we had a local dentist inquire again about the potential of fluoridating our water supply. We did go back and find the documentation that was put together back in 2012, along with the documentation that was provided recently. All of that, again, is within the online packet. It's available for the entire public to see. I also had our utilities director look online. This information's all publicly available, and there are just a handful of bullets I'm going to, I'm going to read. 599 communities out of 1,457 communities in Michigan produce or buy fluoridated water. Cadillac has a naturally occurring fluoride level at a concentration of up to .21. For drinking water, .7 is the targeted dose if the objective is to, is to fluoridate the water so that it helps prevent tooth decay. For every dollar that's spent on fluoride injection into a water supply, an average of $38 of dental work is saved. The cost annually is between 50 cents to $3 per person, and Jeff might need to explain that number a little bit better, because it seems like a pretty wide range. Cadillac was listed as Michigan's largest city that does not fluoridate the water in the early 1990s. However, we were unable to find any recent data to see if, if that statistic is still, is still the same, or if it's different. Back in 2012, when this opportunity was brought to the city council, it was brought to us in a very similar way, where there is an opportunity to receive a grant to help offset the cost of acquiring the necessary equipment to add fluoride into the, into the water supply, into the municipal water supply. It's a, basically, an annual program, as I understand, and, and there's recently been, again, another local doctor that has suggested that we take advantage of this outside funding opportunity to acquire the equipment, or at least to pay for most of, most of what that equipment cost is, to then be able to fluoridate the water supply. The information that was provided back in 2012, again, included essentially various articles and studies in favor of it, as well as various articles and studies not in favor of it, and some other statistics. And the city council at that point in time chose not to take any action, was receptive of the information, was complimentary to the request that came in, but essentially determined that it wasn't something to follow up on at that time. This evening, the city council has, again, a host of choices, should it wish to go down a variety of paths. We could look into trying to get cost estimates. We believe it would probably cover about 70% of the cost of putting in, putting in the equipment. We haven't gone that far into engineering anything, but we could go that direction if that behooves the city council. The city council could advise, take all of this information under advisement, and then determine not to take any action, or simply advise that I would be informed if we should take further action later, at some later point in time. City council may also decide to direct me to try to solicit feedback from the public, perhaps in a similar fashion that we did with regard to the medical marijuana issue. Again, that was an issue that we expected to be something that the community would really truly engage in, and frankly, you know, we didn't get a lot of people either taking the survey or, or coming out to the forums. We did get a lot of people that didn't take any action, which could be something in and of itself. So, that's, as I kind of outlined that out, basically where we're at this evening. There's also no need for you to, to do anything this evening, and you could say, thank you, and we can bring it back should you wish me to do that as well at some other point in time, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I think that there was a tremendous, it was very interesting reading, by the way, because I wasn't here during that, that period the last time. So, um, does anybody have anything to add as far as discussion, or would you like to just leave it where we are?
Like to mull over it.
Yeah. It's a, I'm hearing from a lot of people in the community, and so, there are people out there who are very passionate one way or the other, and it's usually one way, so.
The information was incredible-
Yeah.
-that was given, and I, I didn't realize the history that's gone in it. And I didn't know, because Dr. Ritzman had asked, you know, what's the next step in this process? I didn't know it had actually gone to a vote years ago, and I didn't know if that's actually the next step, as if, if-
Rather than the council dealing with the issue. So, if I may, Councilmember King, the city council never voted. They just chose not to take any action. If, you know, if this is something that we do want to seriously consider, another option that I didn't mention before, is it something that we can certainly bring up when we do our, our planning workshop, when we talk about our budget for fiscal year '20, and we think about the, you know, the projects, the more of the policy-related type, you know, concepts, this could be one. In fact, I think that this was talked about during one of those similar budget meetings back in 2012, and Councilmember Spelman and Chipper's may recall if that was the case or not. But I recall, there was a public meeting we had in the conference room, and I think we were talking about budget, but I could be mistaken. Just another option that's out there. We can, we could talk about it when we're looking at our goals, if this is something that we want to focus time, you know, in exploring. If this is truly an annual grant, we could always look at that in terms of that timeframe as well, so.
I appreciate the information, but I, I, you know, I really feel like it's a lot right now to process, and I'm-
About 650, so-
Yes, it's a lot.
And to your point at the last meeting, this topic gets very personal for people very fast.
Very fast.
And after reading all of that information, I personally understand why now. And it isn't just, it isn't just from any one perspective. It could be financially, it's going to cost 50 cents to $3 more per person. You know, already, we're pushing, you know, people are upset with the fees that we're passing on. It can be anywhere from the fact that people feel like government shouldn't decide what's in the water when it's a prescription, it's a prescription sort of substance, if you will. And there are other means to get, this is, these are things I've heard in the community in the last couple of weeks, you know, and in the reading. You know, there are other ways to provide fluoride, fluoride to people. So, you know, for us to make the determine as government, for us to make the determination what we're causing everybody to have to participate in, makes me truly uncomfortable. But I am open to the discussion if people want to have it. I don't think it's something we should embark on this evening, because we've had a lot on our plates, and maybe everybody hasn't gotten through all of that information that was provided. Would you agree?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay.
It does get personal really fast, and there, you know, there are people who feel very strongly that they don't want to see anything added to their water, and, and I'm one of them. I understand we've got, you know, some things in there that we have to have in there, but, you know, we've got some pretty good water. We've got an award to show it for it, which, and I totally understand the public health situation, too, related to fluoride, but you have to weigh that against adding something to something that-
I'll be on standby.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, I think we can move forward tonight? Okay. All right, then, the next thing on our agenda would be to open the floor for any additional public comments that anyone would have this evening.
Alex, so these negative, can I ask?
No. You can, you can speak at the public comment if you'd like to. And please understand that public comment is the opportunity for you to comment, not for us to debate.
Oh, okay, I'm not, it's not a debate.
Okay.
The, the pros and con articles are online. I can look up the con articles.
Yes.
Would it, and I, I guess I'll look them up, and I'll see-
I was going to say, I think I sent the packet out. If you've got the packet, you've got it all.
Okay. Did I get one? For me? No?
I saw the email.
Hi, it's me again, Cheryl Mays. I'm on, already on the line, so. Two things, real quick. One is, I am thrilled that you're drinking out of glass bottles and filling it from the tap. I have to say, I'm so thrilled. I did my own little Earth Day booth out there, and it was all about, you know, why do we put water in plastic? It wasn't all about that. It was one of the things it was about. Anyways, I'm very happy that what you're doing out here is awesome. The other thing is, with respect, please, Marcus, I don't know if it was you that- The other thing is, with respect, please, Marcus, I don't know if it was you that set up that survey, but I, I didn't understand how you were tracking whether it was one-to-one correspondence because there was no individual number on the surveys. There was, you could take it from different places and, so I didn't think it was a very scientific survey. I think also, you know, if you're, if you're not wedded to the internet, which I know a lot of people aren't, it might have been better to send, you know, something you could just fill in a little circle on or whatever and send back or with a stamped envelope or what have you. It's water under the bridge at this point, but I just wanted to comment about that not really being much scientific information go on in the community. And I know people aren't, you know, showing up in droves, but I think if you put a little bit more time into thinking about how you want to get community information in a balanced way, I think that would be good.
Okay, thank you.
Bob Levan, thank you for having me back again. Thank you for passing the Cadillac Human Rights Ordinance. The caution would be that this is, this is not a culmination of our journey, but just a beginning. We must understand and teach that diversity strengthens our community. Constructive, effective diversity must come with understanding and tolerance for our differences to help make our community stronger. Thank you. Thank you for your brave stance.
Randy Lindell. One moment while I write this and we'll just about call this meeting that's over. I have a couple of comments to make. I live in Cadillac on a beautiful Cadillac. My first comment is kudos to the city Cadillac on the drinking water. Good job. The utmost importance and safety of drinking water to citizens to provide to us. We appreciate it, knowing that our tap water is there. No, our dogs like it a lot. Second, I'm happy to see the city council pass and take a proactive stance on this nondiscrimination ordinance. I know firsthand about being discriminated about my sexuality in the workplace and I'm still very upset about it today. After all, this is 2018, you know, even being groups, being denied coming to Cadillac, this is 2018, you know? This is the new millennium. You know, I was mental and mentally and verbally abused towards my sexuality and then today it still affects me, you know, from being done in the workplace. So, that saddens me, you know, that, that had to happen. Two real quick comments and that'll be it. No fluoride in a city drinking water, if it's already there, let it be there. It's had so many parts per million. And, and our favorite subject is no to any add-on ordinances for the Sebert apartment complex and no variance add-ons also. Have a good evening. That'd be...
Thank you.
Abba-dabba-doo.
Seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to good of the order. Does anyone have anything this evening?
I would just throw out, the discussions are wonderful that we're having. It's not having discussions that causes problems, so let's keep discussions going. I invite everyone and I know other people have heard me, call me if you have issues, call council if there's stuff going on. We want people to be involved. I don't care what issue it is. We need people giving us feedback so we can do the best job. Answer those surveys, give, give us grief if they're not good so we can get out surveys that, that help you. But one of my favorite sayings growing up, but it was not mine, through controversy comes growth. It's only through discussion and different opinions that you get to the best resolutions. So thank you all for your involvement.
Yeah, I, I'd like to thank the, the group of citizens that first brought this to, the idea of this ordinance to our attention. Something that I've been hoping for since I was first elected to, to terms ago, a while ago. And so, at, at various other times, the community, different community members have approached me and for the first time, this one group really did their homework and gave us lots of good information, so thank you for that. I'd also like to, I'm sure there are no high school age students watching this. I might be wrong, but I doubt it. But if you are a parent of a high school age student, we're talking about community involvement and there's a wonderful opportunity for your student to get involved in local government through the Cadillac Mayors Youth Council. We meet this Wednesday between four and five. We meet every third Wednesday. This summer, I'd like to thank both...
Foster and Swift.
Foster Swift and Cadillac Mercy, or Cadillac Munson Healthcare for sponsoring two different movies in the park that the youth council, council put together and that the Cadillac Band Boosters came out and sold refreshments. It was really great. The first one, it was Rainy and Miserable and people still came. And this, this Saturday night, there were a lot more people and it was a beautiful night with the sun setting behind the movie screen. I got a message from my daughter in Nashville, you know, saying hashtag your Friday night or your Saturday night. And I just took a picture of that and she said, I wish I was home. So, good, good job, youth council for doing that. And join more, you know, the trouble with, with youth, youth council is that when you graduate from high school, you graduate from youth council. So it's always moving and rotating and we ebb and flow with the number of members that we have. And right now, we're really looking for some new high school kids to come join us. It's, it's worthwhile and it's fun.
I'm so glad that you brought up that it was a group of individuals from the community that brought the Human Rights Ordinance forward because they really do need to be recognized and commended for that and they did their homework. Many of them are here in the audience tonight and thank you. I know the first time you brought it forward, it didn't go anywhere and you kept pushing it and, you know, it's, it's all about timing. As Randy said, it is 2018 after all, so it was our time.
And thanks for the great water bottles. Now I don't have to schlep my own from home.
You gotta keep these here.
I will keep it right here.
Are you gonna wash them?
Yes.
I did put my name online just because of, I wasn't sure what kind of sanitary, anything we had.
I saw the Sharpie come out. Special.
For the good of the order, I, I just want to once again put out a great big thank you to Jeff and his team and congratulate you on this prestigious award that you brought home to the city. It puts us on the map again and we love to have people talking about Cadillac, so thank you. Another shout out I wanted to give this evening was that I received, as many did, an email from Joy Van Dri from the Visitors Bureau and she was talking about, she wanted to let us know where the net proceeds go from the DCA's Craft Beer Festival. And over the years, they've done some pretty wonderful things with the proceeds from the Craft Beer Festival, which is coming up again this Saturday. They were able to donate $5,000 to help with the renovation of the Cadillac Commons. They donated the twinkle lights that we see during the holidays on the lamp posts downtown. And this year, they've actually purchased a great big double drape swag, candle swag to decorate the downtown from Thanksgiving through the new year. So, I love what they do to brighten up our downtown and so I just wanted to give them a shout out tonight during good of the order.
I just have one thing I need to add.
Okay.
It's not necessarily a real exciting thing, but I gotta throw it out there. There is a labor lockout occurring statewide, may have an impact on a couple of our road projects, specifically Leeson. Leeson is gravelled in between Division and Chestnut. We do not know when that lockout will be done. We do not know whether or not there will be other workers coming in and finishing it before it's done. That is a possibility. We're not, it's not our project, it's an M dot project. However, I do know that some of the contractors that are involved in the lockout are also working on non-state projects that we have in our community such as the Mark, Farmers' Market Project and finishing off Cass Street. So, I just wanted to mention that, well, it could, it could impact those as well.
Oh, okay.
Even though it's not a state project, it's contractors that are still affected by that lockout. So, I don't know, I don't want to hit a panic button. I just want to publicly advise that as soon as we're able to get those projects done, we certainly will. I do know that paving is scheduled to occur later this week and next week on some of the other streets that we're, that we're doing currently. So, Cadillac is dodging a big bullet, but we still might get nicked a little bit, so...
Okay. All right. If that's all, if we could have a motion or need to go into closed session tonight?
Make a motion to adjourn to closed session to consult with our city attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with Wexford County Circuit Court Consolidated Case Numbers 13-24803-CH and 17-27610-CZ, Terry D LLC et al. versus Clam Lake Township and Herring Charter Township versus City of Cadillac and Hop Family LLC and City of Cadillac versus Herring Charter Township and Clam Lake Township and to consider the purchase or lease of real property. Would you like me to invite Jeff Deetlin to join us?
Yes.
I would like to invite Jeff Deetlin, our utilities director, to join us.
I'll support that motion.
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes, motion carries. And with that, we adjourn.
I'm gonna put TI's name on my bottle.
[laughing]